Roll call the city council for the meeting of Wednesday, May 1st, 2013, 9:00 AM. Mr. Winarski, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mrs. Randkunz, so Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, all please rise for a moment, asylum meditation and the pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, this morning we asked that we remember all those that are less fortunate than we are in this community as well as our global community around the world. We ask that we remember the families of those who have lost loved ones since we were last in these chambers and remember the importance of the youth in our community. We see that and we will embrace that this morning through Cathedral Prep, but many other young people in our community who need positive thought, love, mentorship and care. And so let us remember them and their families as well. We also ask, and finally, our God and Creator to give us wisdom to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
I also ask that we remember Lois Busek, who passed away this past week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting of April 17th and for bills for payment on May 3rd and May 10th. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Randkunz, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Mr. President? Good morning, men. I don't know if there's any women on that football team, but welcome to our council meeting. I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Mersky here, who is going to present you with.
The team captains and the coach want to step forward. I'd like to thank you guys for coming out today. I know it's always tough to leave school and your academic careers. As a teacher, I always, I understand the academic rigors and how you just want to be there. So we're glad that you're here with us. And we're here today for a special occasion to recognize you on your state championship. I had the honor and privilege of teaching at Prep when Coach Michler won his first state championship, was that back in 2000? And time flies, but how sweet it is to win it a second time. And it's because of you. The work that you did back in August of the year before, practicing, weightlifting, training, all that effort that you put in, the effort you put into your studies to keep your grades up so that you were eligible to play, that's a testament to the hard work that it takes to become a champion. And that's a testament to you. Don't let this be the crowning moment of your life. This is just one gem in the crown that you're going to wear when you hopefully go to heaven. But this is a moment to savor, a moment to celebrate, but don't let it be your defining moment. You're destined for great things, and this is just one of the great things that you're going to do with your life. I'd like to present this to you, Coach Michler and the Prep team. Whereas the Cathedral Prep football team finished ranking 17th in the nation by USA Today. And head coach Mike Michler is the only District 10 coach to garner two state titles. In addition, quarterbacks Damian Terry set school and District 10 passing and touchdown records this past season. And Dalton Williams set school reception records. Joining him is Brendan Clemensik for school records for touchdown passes. And John Cherison scored the most career extra points in school history. Whereas in company with eight seniors playing college football next season, four are also playing at the Division One level. Therefore, be it resolved that the council of the city of Erie, by the council of the city of Erie, that this commendation is hereby presented to the Cathedral Prep football team, school administration, coaches and student body, upon achieving the goals that they set upon themselves with hard work, dedication and personal sacrifice. Congratulations to you guys. This will be placed on the official city council record for generations to come. And people will be talking about your victory for years to come. So you really did a good thing. You made the city of Erie proud. Because when they announced you on television, I was watching it at one of the establishments. It was amazing. People came out from all, all over the city, people from Strong Vincent, people from Central. Everyone was out cheering for you when they announced Erie Cathedral Prep. So you made Erie proud. We're proud of you and you should be proud of yourselves. Coach, thank you.
If you guys want to go up.
Congratulations, thanks for coming out. Congratulations. That's a good future.
Congratulations. Good for you. How about you? Congratulations. How about you? Oh, I had a couple of high school. How about you? You too! Great, that's a great school. Enjoy it.
Congratulations.
Guys, Mr. McDonald needs a seat, so you are welcome to go back to school. I'm looking out for you.
You're a rare form today.
Yeah, I am. It's good stuff.
I taught theology when I went to.
That's my double major elementary in theology.
Swanson, thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Bob, you are providing, we still saw you entertained this morning. He admitted to going to establishments on television.
And I told her going out.
And he said, they might be going.
I think Mike.
I think you did say Mike.
The record.
Front row.
In the right business.
Your okay, Ruby.
Business is on.
Ever disappoint.
She's ever disappointed.
Mr. Clem, where are we at? Repository sales? Yes, Mr. President. If anybody here for repository sales? Anybody here for any repository sales? Hearing none? Brings us to citizens to be heard, right? Correct. See, you didn't have to wait too long.
Can I come up now?
You're up.
There's some fine young men left here. I wish y'all would treat our kids out there. My name is McDonald and my property is 19th and Reed.
Thank you.
Y'all know me, y'all ought to be tired of me by now, but I'm not tired of coming down here. If you was doing the right thing, I wouldn't have to come down here. See, we got a new lady over there. The other one got tired of sitting up there for the mayor, huh? Well, time brings about a change. We need a change. I see that Keller, is he related to the Congressman Keller that's running for a judge or something? We got one deadhead, and that's Keller. What do we need with another? If he's related to him, then we don't need him. We already got one doing nothing. He's so important, you can't even get to talk to him. That don't make sense. You're supposed to be a public servant. We're supposed to be able to talk to y'all. When you get so important that you don't want to talk to the citizens and the taxpayers, then you shouldn't be there. That's not your call. You're just forcing yourself in. You had a little money and a little friends out there that hoped you'd get in. We want peoples that love the people and going to treat the people right. You don't treat the people right. Not even down in Washington do you treat the people right. You know what? Y'all care more for faggots than you do the babies. And that don't make sense. God will deal with you about this, though. I promise you that. The Bible said he will. I didn't say he will. The Bible said it. If you read the Bible, and I'm pretty sure all of you up there can read, because if you couldn't, you wouldn't be up there. But you don't understand. You think you know what the people want. Get out there and ask the people what they want. You force it down their throat. You got people scared of y'all. I'm not scared of nothing I ever seen. Nothing. Kill me. I got to die one day. But remember this, you can't keep killing me. I died one time. That's the good part about it. And you're going to die, too. And a lot of you are going to that lake of fire. Old preacher up there, you know what I'm talking about. There is a lake of fire. You read your Bible and you'll understand it. I guess you will, I don't know. But what I, one of my pit pieces is this new project over here on 19th and Parade. Who did you build it for? Those foreigners you're bringing in? You got people that have been waiting for years and years to get in decent housing. You live in decent housing. Hey, if they wind it is, they still deserve decent housing. When them foreigners come in, they got a place to stay, they got money waiting for. Our kids, you do nothing for. But that's going to change. Everything come to an end eventually. Y'all don't seem to understand that. You're supposed to be educated people, but you don't understand it. See, you think you know everything. And when you get to thinking that you know everything, you don't understand nothing. Our kids are our future. And this generation coming on now, with them pants hanging down, they got them guns out there, they're going to start killing the right peoples after a while. They've been killing up each other, but they're going to come to their senses. Killing up each other. That don't even make sense. That's stupid. When you pull a gun, you're supposed to shoot it anyway. You don't just pull it. A gun is a dangerous thing. You don't play with them. You don't put them where kids can get a hold to them. I don't know. I don't know. I think you're after the wrong people. You should get after those peoples that, well, they got ways out, you know, loopholes they call them, I guess. Anytime you vote against, anytime you vote against, that was a fast five minutes. And I know I don't talk that fast. Anyway, the people got them AK-47s, they better hold on to them because they might need them down the road. Because I don't think they got nobody out there to protect them. We're protecting peoples that we didn't know nothing about. We're bringing them over here. We're giving them the best of everything, but the peoples going to get tired of that after a while. Because you're misusing the citizens. I worked 40 years, and you took my social security away from my kids.
Mr. McDonald?
I know, I know. You don't want to hear it, but there it is.
Not that we don't want to hear it. Got to be fair.
At least you're honest. That's what I like about you. You'll tell the truth.
Want to be fair.
Even though it's against you, you'll tell.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Julia Calippo. I reside at 417 Liberty Street in Erie, and you can contact me at 454-0736. I'm here today about the property reassessments that we had last year. I know that was a countywide thing, but I wanted to let you know that I have a property that I purchased last year, that it was assessed at 88 when I bought it, and then it was raised up to 98,000. The city raised my taxes, well, they attempted to raise my taxes. I appealed it, and my taxes were actually knocked down to $800 a year. So you're thinking $3,000 a year to $800 a year in taxes. That's a really big difference. So I let the appeals process way out, and I expected that there was going to be a good turnout for the tax claim office. And what I received was a bill in January for $3,600. And I called and I said, why is there a bill for $3,600? Well, you didn't pay that $3,000 worth of taxes that you owed for last year. And then we added 10% interest rate and penalties and this other fee. And so basically, even though my property value was knocked down, they're still accepting, expecting me to pay this outrageous amount of money. So I called all over the city and basically was told my only option would be to sue the city of Erie in a legal action in county court, which I really don't understand, because here in Pennsylvania and in most places, whenever there's a legal issue, you're litigating something in court. Basically, it goes retroactive, you know, personal damages, any kind of outcome as far as receiving social security or child support benefits, they're always retroactive. So the issue is, why aren't taxes that go down considered retroactive? Because that is a justice to the people themselves. Those people are doing the right thing. They're trying to pay their taxes, they're trying to contribute to the city. But how can they do that if they're being overtaxed and then have this interest rate and stuff compounded on top of it? You know, and I think it's ludicrous that I have to sue the city to get my tax changed to go retroactive. Our tax values are not accumulating, they are depreciating. We have foreclosed homes everywhere, okay? We have blight, people abandon stuff, people getting robbed. We've got all these factories that are closing up, they're leaving the area, okay? So what happens is, you've got empty houses everywhere, okay? So that means those bring down the value of the other houses in the city. And that's not a good thing, and we don't like to think about that, but that's the fact of the matter, and sometimes the truth hurts. Now, somebody needs to really do something about that, you know, in regards to these property taxes. Because we don't want to rape the citizens of the city or county of money that is justly theirs. And it also encourages people to leave the houses vacant. I see on the amendment sheet that you have, there's $6,000 is to be allotted for the demolition of a property here in Erie. You know, maybe that property could have been given to a homeless person to rehab, or, you know, there could have been a lot of different options as far as that property goes. But, I mean, what's the incentive for the people? You know? And I followed through two chains of the appeal process for the taxes, and I encourage anybody who doesn't feel like their property taxes are what they should be to appeal them and follow the proper chains to make sure that they are paying the exact right amount of taxes for their property, whether it be above or below what is assessed. I mean, because we want to do the right thing and pay taxes once again, but we don't want to price gouge people. You know, and we have a county councilman that's running again, and he wants people to vote for him, but, you know, he tried to multiply our property taxes by two. So it's kind of like, why would you vote for somebody that raised up your property taxes multiplied by two? Doesn't make sense. You know, it's about the people. You're not here for concrete and for people, you're here, for concrete and for money, you're here for people. Because no matter how much money you have and no matter how much power you have and how much political pool and friends that you have, it's about those common folk that are there regardless and that depend on you. And that's what I want to remind everybody, is, you know, maybe to look into something about this tax situation and price gouging the citizens, because these are things that are going to force people away from Erie instead of recruiting them to bring them into Erie. So that was my message today.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Morning, Council.
Morning. Good morning.
I stay at 448 East 15th Street. I have a couple of things. One of the main things that I have this morning is these guns, okay, on the street, primarily with our kids. And what I'm, what I want to say is, I thought we had a law on the book. If a kid wind up with one of your guns on the street and you ain't reported it at home from what was stolen, if you ain't reported it and an individual commit a crime on the street, they find the gun and you ain't report it, you're supposed to arrest the individual that owned that gun that didn't report it. What's up with that? I mean, this has been going on for over a year. We ain't heard nobody say, well, we got Joe Blow's gun, he didn't report it. What's up with that? Ain't nobody arresting these people where these guns coming from? And you look at the community like, you know, like you have all these guns. True enough, they do. But where are they coming from? And no one's addressing that problem. And then, too, again, then the other problem is that the black folks in the community don't have no representation as far as down here. The mayor been in office over eight years. He ain't been in the black community yet, trying to find out what the problem is in our community. He ain't been there and he haven't said anything. And then you look at council up here. Council was put up here to represent the people, not the city all. Council don't represent the citizens in the community. Y'all ain't representing the people. There's a whole lot of problems going out there that's never been addressed at council. And I really don't understand that. I mean, there's dire problems out there in the community, and no one's addressing these problems. Someone's coming up again? Do you have jobs again this year for the kids? Is there any outlet for them? No. My question is, what do the city expect peoples to do when they're hungry? And I'm not saying what they're doing out there is right. No, it's not right. But then, too, again, you got to live. Peoples got to eat. Some know better how to do that than others. But what about the ones that they had no raising? Is he supposed to decipher this here and put it all together for himself? Because ain't nobody telling them nothing. And that makes us a serious problem on them streets out there. And some where we got to stop and draw back, you know, and change the flavor. The flavor of this situation got to be changed, because like Mr. McDonald said, we going to have a serious problem soon or later. You know, like I got kids out there in them streets, I got grandkids out there in them streets. I'm worried about them. Because sooner or later, something going to happen. Then hell going to break loose. And I don't want it to break loose on my family. I'm concerned about by it. Did you raise them right? I got 15, ain't none in the penitentiary, so I, you know, I attribute that to something. I attribute that to something. You know, and I talk to the kids every day when I see them out there, and they always asking that same question. What about us? When is it our turn? We got a black president in the Capitol, he ain't saying nothing about our problems either. So it's not just city council, this is all over the nation. You know, everybody, you know, worried about the kids getting killed. So, yeah, I worry about them, too. And that's another thing in Erie. You just seen in the last couple of weeks, there are three or four different peoples been charged and sent to jail for killing babies. Okay? I ain't seen none of the benediction sisters, you know, on that level yet. But when there's a black individual there, there's a visual being held and they doing all the... Is everybody saying to us is that our children is more important than white kids? White peoples killing kids out there, they getting three years. Black folks killing kids out there, they getting 10. Just a minute, I'm through. But if you look at the data, the way it's going in terms of the sentences and how it's going now, white folks getting two or three years for killing a baby. Black individuals get charged with a baby. And one to the attic going up, I'm through, going up, going up the stairs and accidentally drop her grandbaby, kill her, they get that woman nine, 18 years.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none. At 9:30 here, we're going to have a public hearing, so...
Set up the stenographer now and get right into the...
We're going to do a three-minute break here and get everything set up, and we'll start our public hearing.
Jessica was laughing at me because they told those kids they might go to heaven. They might go to heaven. They might.
You should have said, now study good at school. Because if not, you might end up...
At the microphone.
At the microphone.
Every week.
They should have, he should have made a mistake.
See what it's about. See what it's about.
Yeah, but then they won't ever want to meet couples.
Well, that's my...
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, 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 ninety-nine,[1592.13] Seven.
Okay, David. Six dollars.
Right.
I'll get you. I'll get you.
Service fee. Six, seven.
Some of the issues that came up last night. I think the service...
I see, I, I've heard that. Trying to get...
Yeah, I mean, it'd be nice to have some conversations so you could say, okay, this is what the topic is. Well, the, the other side of the coin is if... I'm not suggesting that's the case, but if one of the questions... Aggressive there. What would be the situation? Then I can understand since we're lucky to do that, because they're having trouble paying the taxes. I do think if we're not a large merchant... Cover that service and service.
No big deal.
A merchant person, yeah. To do that.
You're not, you're not sure what.
Yeah, communication.
The one thing, the thing about... Only build seven thousand square foot buildings.
Square footage is there for them to make money, return their investment.
Really some explanation.
Here's what it is now. Here's what their services... Not necessarily used so much because they are...
Yeah.
But like these here, private... Massage parlors, which is the massage parlor, the kind.
What for the...
No, it says only here.
Have to consider this, but that's the density. How can we use seventy-one per unit just not... We work on one. Right.
We're gonna have a lot of people speak, it's gonna be a...
It could.
We're not open on any of this today, Andy.
No.
Hey, Jen.
Uh, ninety-nine.
I was thinking, did I have to...
No.
Just don't remember it. It's possible that I remember that.
Is that...
I could have missed that, I could have missed that.
I didn't miss it.
That's where that, that ice rink is.
All right, I was getting...
It's a lot of property.
You missed the Reese, Reese dead kittens.
The bucking, she looks... Two come back in and two leave. Killing. You're killing. No respect for the argument, no respect for the argument.
Okay.
I don't know how many bathrooms we had.
One for five, I had one for seven.
Will you, Jim? Will you read the, are you gonna read all this? Okay, good. Thanks.
Ready, yep, thank you.
Yeah, we can go. Let's make it happen. Right?
Well, she's always likes to make an intro. One of these cups, she'll be alright.
Ask my husband.
It's a woman thing.
Where would you be without us?
You're right here.
You did have to bring up biology, didn't you?
Mother's Day is coming up.
I told my wife I was gonna get her new husband right from...
Top biology. Just came right.
Actually, she said that after forty-two years, she's finally got me where the...
Mr. Clem?
City council will now proceed to, uh, a zoning public hearing pursuant to the provisions of zoning ordinance eighty-two thousand five and the proper legal advertising. City council will proceed to a public hearing at approximately nine thirty a.m. regarding an amendment to zoning ordinance eighty-two thousand five by change in classification of property located at McClellan Avenue and the Bayfront Highway, being approximately thirty-eight acres in area from C-three Central Business District to that of C-two General Business District, per the request of Vendetti Brothers Associates.
Okay. This time, would I like to ask anybody in favor to come up and speak, please?
Thank you for inviting me this morning. I am Richard Vendetti. I am one of the senior associates of Vendetti Brothers Associates. Um, we own some land in the city of Erie. And we are the owner of a thirty-eight acre tract of undeveloped land, uh, in the city, situated between Bird Drive on the east, McClellan on the west. On the north is Thirty-third Street and on the south is the Bayfront Parkway. I think most of you are familiar with the tract of land. Many years ago, when we were thinking about developing this, uh, thirty-eight acre parcel on the Bayfront Parkway, we checked with an established realtor who told us to go for the highest zoning. And we did go for the highest zoning and we got that approved by city council. And that is a C-three, so we obtained Central Business District. Years later, after reviewing our zoning status, we determined we made a mistake in getting the C-three zoning. The problem with Central Business District is that all buildings must be built on the property line and there is no front setback allowed in C-three. Section two oh five, two nine of the zoning ordinance states in C-three district, no building may be setback in any degree from the front property line, exclusive of the public right of way, which of course is the street. That section goes on to say, "The purpose of C-three is to maintain the high-density urbanized commercial pattern fundamental to downtown development. For building purposes, all buildings butt up against each other, for the most part. There's no front setback allowed. You have the street, you have the sidewalk, you have the building." "It is large-scale, high-density development of property utilized to its fullest extent. It's a much too restrictive use of our property. Tenants do not want to build on the property line." And in the zoning ordinance, Central Business District, right there, downtown, ours is out here. It's the only other one on McClellan and Bayfront that's in red. It's the only one in Central Business District. That's presenting a problem for us now. A request from, a rezoning from C-three to C-two is really a simple request and we are now requesting to change that, C-three to C-two. I don't think any of the neighbors are really intend, are opposed to a lesser use. Problem is, C-three does not allow for adult use. Other words, C-three, which we are currently zoned for, does now allow for adult bookstore, massage parlors. But C-two does allow the right to lease to adult bookstores and massage parlors as a conditional use. In my discussion with Mr. William Turner and his wife last week, I assured him we do not contemplate any such leases for adult use. I gave him my word, we would not accept tenants for adult bookstores or massage parlors. Our interest is to develop the land for its best use. We have no intent or desire to enter into leases with these types of businesses that are offensive to the neighborhood. I'd like to show council, our old plan, which we came up with years ago. It's an old plan. It's not in effect, but it's a plan of what we would like to do with our property. Let me make a few more comments about adult use. When you have a national retail tenant, all national retail tenants prohibit adult use in the leases. They prohibit massage parlors, tattoo parlors, adult bookstores. And you do not see them in any large malls or large plazas. Landlords do not want adult bookstore because they devalue the property. The zoning code calls for adult bookstores to be seven hundred and fifty feet from a property line that would be right smack dab in the middle of our development, in the parking area. So that's not gonna work. These types of uses are objectionable to tenants in the neighborhood in general and conditional uses must be approved by city zoning and city council. I doubt city council or zoning board is gonna get approval to adult use. And I, I think that's the main concern of the neighbors. The biggest point is, um, adult bookstores are not in the mall. They're not in Summit Town. They're not in Kmart Plaza. They're not in the Mill Creek Mall. They're not in Colony. They're not in Yorktown Center. And they're not there because big box tenants, whether it's Macy's, Giant Eagle, Home Depot, they have a prohibition against adult use when they go in a store, when they go in a plaza. So they're just not there. It, it's really not an issue. We're making an issue that's not there. Second issue, Mr. Turner last week suggested and asked us to rezone to C-one Local Business District. We can't go down to C-one, which is a much lesser use as C-one allows for limited retail business. You look on my map that I gave you, there's one, one square footage is fifty thousand, another one's fifty thousand feet, another one's a hundred thousand feet. Under section three oh five four-four of the ordinance, retail allows retail businesses that are under seven thousand feet. Now, seven thousand feet is seventy by a hundred. Walgreen and Rite Aid are about seven thousand feet or even more. But that's a very limited retail use, not for a thirty-eight acre parcel where you want to put a national retail tenant. Section three oh five four-four of C-one states, "The intent of limited retail is to accommodate small-scale retail enterprises benefiting nearby residents and total commercial use shall not exceed seven thousand feet." Now, all, all national retail, call them big box or national retail tenants, start at twenty-five thousand feet and go up to a hundred thousand feet. I don't really know what the objections are. We've owned this land for thirty-five years. We've paid twelve to fourteen thousand dollars in taxes every year, which is about four hundred thousand dollars. Now time to develop this property or attempt to develop it. We've had a very difficult, difficult economic downturn for the past four years and the economy is slowly now recovering. We are looking ahead for the rezoning of this property, so we have it in place when we negotiate leases, whether we develop it or we give it to a developer to accomplish. As such, we can't be bound by Central Business District, whereby buildings butt up against other buildings just like that. You have a street, a sidewalk, and then a building, uh, with no front setback. You have to have a setback, you have to have a grass area. So C-three makes it almost impossible for us to develop this property. Land development, including development of the infrastructure with streets, lights, sewers, curb cuts, paving, very expensive proposition. We have no tenants in mind at this time and we are not negotiating with any developer for a national retail tenant at this time. But it's time to think about developing this property and we want to have C-two in place. The city needs tax dollars. My guess is if this property, when it's developed, uh, with about two hundred thousand square feet of space, probably will, the city, county, school will probably realize about two hundred thousand, hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand in tax dollars. Some of the neighbors in our property have been using our property for a long time. They have a green space, they have putting greens, they drive golf balls, they practice football, and that's all fine. I have no problem with that. But don't come in and, and, uh, attempt to tell us what to do with our property when we want to use it for the best and highest use. And we can't do that with C-three. I told them we would not allow bookstores, adult bookstores, or massage parlors. That's good for as long as I'm on the watch of VBA, me and my brother and the other young Vendettis that are in my law office. They have instructions also not to, uh, lease for adult use. Biggest thing is, national retail tenants won't allow it in the lease anyhow. None of them allow it. That's why you don't see it around. The only type of place you see adult use is State Street or Grandfathered Inn or a freestanding building. So the, the request is not a difficult request, uh, but it makes it much easier to develop from, with, with the C-two without that very restrictive, uh, downtown central business of no front setbacks, no side setbacks and, uh, uh, buildings that butt against each other. It's really for central downtown and, and we don't have that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Vendetti. Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone else to speak in favor? Hearing none, uh, anybody here to speak against?
Good morning and thank you for your time. My name is Dennis Christopher. I live at thirty-five thirteen Bird Drive and I'm here with, uh, many of my neighbors that live also on Bird Drive and in the area. Mr. Vendetti did a very good job of, uh, distracting from their initial usage of the land. If you look at the property on the map as it stands now, the only right of ways they have to that property is off of the Bayfront Connector. So the property is basically useless in the zoning the way it stands now. It would also be basically useless for commercial development because they'd have to open up the side streets off of Bird Drive. Therefore, I believe that their total agenda is to build housing in that area, which would qualify under the zoning change. It does stand now, I believe, it also states multifamily dwellings, but without access to that area, it's virtually a landlocked piece of property. Also, if they were to develop off the Bayfront Highway, if you're familiar with the area, the only access they would have would be across Thirty-A Street. The traffic would have to divert on Bird Drive or turn around somewhere to head down the Bayfront to access the property. Because there's not enough area between McClellan and the Bayfront to put a driveway. So they basically need to open up the side streets off of Bird Drive. And as it stands now, with the development of Harbor Creek, our street has gone from a basic neighborhood street to a thoroughfare and a somewhat drag strip. The car count, if they were to do it, excuse me, has increased over the years. Anyone who, most of us that lived there all of our lives knew that it was a tar and chip street and nobody went up there unless you lived there. And now it's nothing to have a, a gang of twenty cars in five minutes going down the street. And the road is in need of repair as it stands now. And if you look at it, it's not designated or designed for heavy truck traffic use. So even if they were to open up the side streets and put commercial usage in there, that would mean that we would have heavy truck traffic and a lot of traffic in the area. And also, if you view the property itself, there is no way that anyone in a commercial business is going to locate there because it's an isolated piece of property. There's houses on Thirty-third Street, I believe it is, where Roselle Park is. There's homes on Bird Drive that their property abut to the property line of Vendettis. So I'm sure they want to put housing in there. And we have enough empty housing right now on Parade Street, off of McKinley. And with the sequester, they've cut the budget on section eight housing. So I don't believe we need any more houses. We need to fill the, the voids that we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, my name is Martin Wiznawski. I reside at four oh two Harvey Street. Mr. Vendetti's proposal was quite interesting in that, uh, he spoke of, uh, adult bookstores, the current zoning, as it refers to as a central business district. My concern's a little bit different and I believe he missed one of the neighbors' most important concerns. On the property he had, he's asking you to rezone, uh, the thirty-eight acres, there's a five point four acres of jurisdictional wetlands with his consultants have pointed out when he first did the surveys of that property in order to, uh, have it rezone to C-three. Those five point four acres of wetlands on that property feed McDaniel Run, which courses through the neighborhood of Thirty-third Street and through a city park of fifty-plus acres, that being McClellan Park, which the neighbors have diligently, with the help of the city of Erie, acquired funds for the development of that park. As a, the representative of the Pennsylvania Lakery Waterset Association for McDaniel Run, I am concerned that the development, if not properly done, and I'm not here either to condone or oppose the, the rezoning, but I wish councils be aware of the fact that the possibility that these five point four acres would be relocated and essentially destroyed by pavement, more hardened surface, would drastically impact McDaniel Run's course. Some history I have done, where I gave a presentation and tour of McDaniel Run last summer. McDaniel Run, and I believe we had conversations with Mr. Vendetti's brother Chester about this and they seemed to be unaware of the fact that McDaniel Run even exists, which is a shame because it actually, due to development above Thirty-Eighth Street... exists, which is a shame because it actually, due to development above Thirty Eighth Street, above Rice Avenue, above Forty First Street, in nineteen hundred, as these topographic maps show, McDaniel Run once all the way flowed from where the old Kohler Farm was, almost in Bell Valley. It was a watershed unto itself, which has been urbanized, I'll admit that. The five point four acres though, that is on his property, serves as a buffer for those neighborhoods as far as, like most wetlands act, to take care of storm surge, which is a problem at McDaniel Run, and other urban streams in the city. But it also provides the flow into McLoughlin Park. And I think that's possibly, like I said, I'll reiterate, one of the concerns he missed with the neighborhood. The fact that they have over twenty-five thousand dollars raised to develop the park in a sustainable manner for the use of all the citizens, citizens of the city. And I guess my main concern is that, it, as I said, I don't oppose or condone the rezoning request, but I would hope that in future rezoning requests, not only before the council and, but also before the zoning boards, they take into consideration some of the environmental effects that could happen with certain zoning changes. Certainly, the, the five point four acres may seem insignificant with their development concerns in that they could apply to have this moved for permits. It is a jurisdictional wetland, as their consultant and a letter that they have on file from the Corps has pointed out. Consequently, you know, they would have to apply for permits and it could be moved. But I contend, and I think that you'll find many other people who are familiar with wetlands and, and familiar with McLoughlin Run in particular, that the five point four acres of jurisdictional wetlands on this property are vital, not only for McDaniel Run, but for the, the neighborhood park that there, a city park. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Council. I'm Carly Eli. I live at twenty nineteen Glendale Avenue. And I'm here this morning representing Burton Dill Neighborhood Watch Organization. I'm the treasurer. And we had some questions regarding the proposed project and zoning. Number one, will, will there be an environmental impact study done? Just as Marty had said, we're concerned about the waterways coming down through the park. We've had, well Jessica, you were there when we had our study done and mapped everything out and we've got a wonderful proposal for a dog park from School Board Fabrizi, I think his name, and he wanted to propose and go in with our dog park. We got a lot of things and I know McDaniel Run comes down through there. And I guess we also want to know how, how will the waterways be affected? And, let's see, and we weren't, I mean, he made it clear that from C three to C two, why they want to get it changed. So, I guess we're against it until we know that the proper channels will be done and it won't affect McLoughlin Park, or the neighbors up there, or anything. We're just in the process of expanding and getting funding and everything and it's a wonderful asset to our city. And we would gladly take donation of land if Vendettis want to, for a McLoughlin Park if they're not using any, so, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Good morning.
Pat Lupo, I live at three fifty-five East Ninth with the Benedictine Sisters and I work with youth at the Neighborhood Art House, but also at the John Haran Garden Apartments and McDaniel Run runs through that area. We have vegetable gardens there and, and raised beds, but we also do a lot of studies at the creek, both aquatic studies, testing water, looking for critters. We've done rain gardens along the creek and we have swales and we actually have a five hundred and fifty square foot wetland that we've been working on the last two years to try to slow down an iron oxide seep between Sixth and Seventh Street. And I guess my concern with the, with the zoning is again, the impact on this creek. I've done a lot of hiking in the headwaters and with the kids, we've hiked all the way down to Chautauqua Park, which is at, at the mouth where it goes directly into Lake Erie. I'm also a member of Plua, the Pennsylvania Lakery Watershed Association, and McDaniel Run has been one of the areas, one of the watersheds that we've been actively involved in. I'd like to mention too, that five point four acre wetland. Every wetland is very, very important for so many reasons. It cleans anything that's running into that creek, that creek. They're important for floodwaters, they're important habitat areas, they're important nursery areas, and no wetland is too small. Also, you can say, well, yeah, we'll, we'll move it, we'll put it someplace else. Mitigation of wetlands fail more times than not. Fifty or sixty percent of wetlands that are mitigated unless folks are spending a lot, a lot of time and money with them, do not last. I guess I would say, if the zoning goes through, neighbors should definitely be involved in the design of the project. And every effort should be made to use green best management practices. And I guess that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
William Turner, I live at twenty-six forty-one East Thirty Third Street. And I have a copy of a petition here with over a hundred names on it, projecting to the zoning. A lot of those people would have been here if this would have been an evening meeting. Here's a copy of a letter, there's seven there, here's a copy of the proposed property. I don't know if Council has that, the letter that Vendetti sent, sent, and the dimensions of all of the property. I don't know if you have. Could I take a look at what Mr. Vendetti passed out, just to see if that's...
Yeah, I'll give you a look.
Or I'll make you a copy of that. Well, that's the old plan.
That's the old plan.
That's the old plan, okay.
You're talking about this?
Well, that's the one that I was supplying to you. I didn't know whether he had it or not.
This is going to be very similar to that.
But I have the dimensions on each one of the plots marked on this one.
All right, this, this is, this does represent what, what was presented before.
Okay. Thank you.
In a minute.
Mr. Vendetti is, is correct when he says that my wife and I met with them. However, he is incorrect when he says that massage parlors and tattoo parlors are conditional use. They're not. They are allowed use in C two. They're not allowed in C one. I think we're rushing here, we're taking a shotgun approach, that we're going to have to rezone everything because we're going to use everything. We have been sitting there for fourteen years and nothing's been used at C three. C three was a mistake. Mr. Vendetti admits that. C three was ramrodded through by how, whatever means, but it wasn't done as appropriate as it should have been. There was no study on the wetlands at that time. There was no, no consideration of the wetlands. It was said it was two separate issues, even though there existed a letter from Gordon Buckley from the DEP that said that wetlands need to be considered anytime you're going to do a, a development that touches the wetlands or encircles the wetlands. That has to be considered. Well, it wasn't because someone decided in the city government that it was a separate issue to be addressed later on. The wetlands are still there. You have access to the Vendetti property off of the Bayfront with, if you're headed west, it's a right turn in and a right turn out because the center of the Bayfront has a wall on it. Mr. Vendetti told my wife and I that he had correspondence from Pendott that was going to allow them to put a stoplight at the intersection and it would open it up for left turns. Thank you, Jim. Would open it up for left turns. I took the opportunity to speak to the head engineer, traffic engineer for Pendott in Oil City, and I spoke to his assistant and I spoke to the young lady who's in charge of permits. And there has never been any correspondence concerning a stoplight either from the Vendettis to, to the, to Pendott or from Pendott to the Vendettis. And that's effective as of eight AM this morning, because I called again to make sure. That's effective as eight AM this morning. Now, the big boxes, stores that Mr. Vendetti spoke of, certainly they're, they're the style of Target and such as that, those are the same big boxes that they wanted to put in here as it is. And they had parking, they had small stores. Now, I don't know whether it's so that the big box stores, national, won't rent where you have a massage parlor or a tattoo parlor. I don't know if that's so. But we know, and I, I think everybody sitting on council is aware of some of the problems in the city for massage parlors. We don't, I don't believe we have a tattoo parlor in the city. That doesn't mean there won't be one. I, but if it's an allowed use, it can move in. The, the other concern that I have is that the property gets developed, hopefully, does it get maintained? You know, the, the Vendettis have two properties that I'm aware of that jump right out at me. There's the property on East Thirty Eighth Street next to Zimmerman Road by Pizza Hut. It's a car wash. It, it has graffiti all over it. The walls are, are in deteriorating shape. You go over to Thirty Eighth and Liberty, on the southeast corner of that intersection is another car wash. And the outside condition of the car wash is, you know, I'm, I'm no expert in whether it's deplorable or it's ragged or whatever, but it's not in good shape. And the, some of the cement walls, retaining walls for the driveway have collapsed. It's, it's not well taken care of. And I fear that when the Vendettis go to develop this, if it's not self-sufficient, it will fall into disrepair quickly. There's a, a letter that was sent from Baldwin Brothers, who was the representative for the Vendettis back in ninety-nine. And a paragraph in that says that "We have already voluntarily agreed that we will not develop any commercial accessways from our property to any of the adjacent residential streets." I'm not sure whether that holds water now, because it's fifteen, fourteen years later. But it was stated at that time and Mr. Rubino was stating in behalf of the Vendettis in that letter. The other thing that I did is that I did some research concerning Vendetti Brothers and their properties. And I found that the properties that they want to rezone right now, the taxes haven't been paid on those since two thousand and ten. And there's a tax bill right now of forty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Back fifteen years ago, when they wanted to change it to, from R one to C three, they hadn't paid the taxes for three years. In addition, other properties that are owned by the Vendettis in the city, but all in the county, some in the county, most of them in the city, there's a debt of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, twenty-three dollars and fifty-one cents, making a total of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-eight cents that the Vendettis are in arrears of, from supporting the taxing bodies, the City of Erie, County of Erie, and the school districts. I'm, I'm not sure that that makes them a good neighbor or a good developer in that that's a responsibility of a property owner. I pay my taxes on time. Sometimes it's a little tight, but I pay it on time because the government can't run, the school district can't run if it doesn't have its money. I, I wonder if it's appropriate to grant this rezoning when we're not, they're not supporting the government that they're asking to do that. It was brought up fifteen years ago and at that time, city council delayed the vote on it until some other issues, the water, the wetlands were looked at. Anyway, that got moved aside. I know somebody else, the first gentleman spoke about increased traffic on Bird Drive. It'll also increase the traffic on East Thirty Third Street, even if they open up Thirty Fifth, Thirty Sixth, and Thirty Seventh Street into the property from Bird Drive. You still have to get off of the Bayfront Highway. If you're headed east, you have to get off, go north on McClellan, right on Thirty Third, right on Bird to make the entrances in there. And if, if it's going to be a successful development, you're going to have a lot of traffic. Now, Mr. Vendetti said mixed uses. And he told us that he, they were looking at, Mr. Chester Vendetti told me on the phone when I spoke to him after I got their letter, which said they were going to have a meeting with all the neighbors, but no meeting ever happened. And a lot of us were waiting for it and I called him on the phone to speak to him about it, and he said that they were going to do mul, mixed use and it was going to be a retail slash residence. And in C three, it provides for multifamily residence, C two provides for multifamily residence. C one does also, and I realize if they want a big box, they can't have it in C one. But there's no rush that you have to take a shotgun and everything, boom, everything has to be C two. If you look how they're parceled out, there's six parcels there, and C one would fit toward the residences and make a, a, a good buffer, other than fifty feet of grass. That's not a buffer from what you're going to get. You're going to get, the neighbors will be, suffer from noise and light pollution. Because any, any plaza that goes in like that, they erect high overhead lights. And they can say all they want about how they point them down, if you go where any of them are, they illuminate the whole area. They illuminate the whole area. Now, this, this land is above my, mine and my wife's property. It sits above it. It sits above almost every property on East Thirty Third Street. So, there's no way that you can't, it just, it's not going to shine into the, into your, into your backyard. In addition to that, the rumor was, and it's terrible to do with rumors, but the rumor was that it would be maybe low-income housing. I, I don't know if that's so or not, or apartments, and you can put, put them forty-five feet high. You put a forty-five foot, four-story apartment building, people on the second, third, and fourth floor are going to be able to look into everybody's backyard on Thirty Third Street. So, if this comes to fruition, there needs to be some input from the, from the neighbors. Now, Mr. Vendetti said, "We try to tell them what to do." No, we try to work with them. You know, I'd like to see it get developed, but I want to see it get developed appropriately with the consideration for the, for the neighborhood. In addition, in the zoning book, it says, section one oh eight point six oh, the zoning is to protect value, to protect... To, it's one oh eight point three oh, to protect, preserve, and improve residential neighborhoods. I, I marked the wrong one. First mistake I made all day. And one oh eight point nine oh, to require a high quality of development in Erie City. Though this ordinance makes every effort to accommodate a great variety of uses and development, it insists that any development adhered to this and other ordinances of the city which set forth standards to assure quality development. And let me, it, the last two words, quality of development, should be re, looked at with what's being planned. I'm not sure that's a quality development. Now, I'm, I'm not impugning Richard in what he said. I, I believe him to be a very truthful man. I've known him forty, over forty years, heck of a basketball player. I'm just saying, this plan doesn't fit for the forty-five or forty-eight houses that abut their property. There's a better way to do this and... There's a better way to do this, and, and there needs to be things looked at. And I don't know whether it's appropriate to, I don't believe it's appropriate to, to grant the C2 zoning change. However, I, I have mixed emotion about it, because that means then we're stuck with the C3 that we didn't want before. But C1 exists, R3 exists, and if you do multi-zoning, rezoning up there, instead of all six properties... I mean, certainly if you, if you want to put in retail, that you want it to be closer to the Bayfront Highway, because that's where your limited access is. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sue Winchell, and my husband and I have been a resident of Bird Drive for 31 years. I'm here on behalf of the many neighbors that couldn't be here due to personal issues or work commitments. Going back on March 24th of 1999, a public hearing before City Council was held to consider the rezoning of the property at East 38th and McClellan Avenue, from R1, C1, and M1 zoning to all C3. I, as well as many of my neighbors, attended this council meeting, stating our concerns in great detail. Petition containing 124 signatures was submitted by Mr. William Turner in opposition to the rezoning. The vote was tabled until environmental issues were investigated. I've given you a copy of the news article that I will refer to here. As indicated in a newspaper article published on April 6, 1999, Chester Vendetti stated that they hired civil engineers to study the property. To our knowledge, no study was ever complete. If it was, I would, I would like a copy of that. On May 26, 1999, the majority of City Council members voted in favor of the Vendetti Brothers' rezoning request to C3. Mario Bagnone stated, "The people were promised that the environmental issues would be investigated before the rezoning issue was voted upon by council." Mario was the only council member to vote no. In February of this year, we received a letter from Vendetti Brothers Associates dated February 11, 2013, stating that they are once again requesting to change the zoning for McClellan Avenue and the Bayfront property from C3 to C2, C attached. It is, it states, "Our intent for this property is to create a mixed-use development consisting of both commercial and residential buildings." The letter further states, "In the near future, we plan to hold a meeting with the neighbors in a convenient location to discuss any concerns about the rezoning." That meeting with the neighbors was never held, and we have not been informed of any details regarding the intended plans for this area prior to this public hearing. I performed a personal survey and concluded that the backyards of approximately 45 residential homes on McClellan Avenue, East 33rd Street, Rice Avenue, and Bird Drive directly face the six parcels of land presented today for this rezoning request. This is concerning, because if this land is not developed in a, quote, "responsible and sensitive manner," that was a quote from Chester Vendetti back in 1999, "these 45 homes will have bright lights, noise, food odors, and litter as an extension of their backyard. If side streets were to be opened on Bird Drive or Rice Avenue to access the development, traffic would greatly increase, and the residents in those areas would lose the small remaining amount of privacy they have left. This is a quiet, safe residential area inhibited by many people, from young children to the elderly, and any decision will literally affect each and every one of us. The proposal for C2 zoning is very concerning in that it allows for massage parlors, tattoo parlors, adult bookstores, adult live entertainment, adult mini-motion picture theaters, and adult motion picture theaters. We believe these things to be an undesirable attraction with the potential to destroy this lovely neighborhood. Bearing this in mind, it would seem the prudent thing to do would be to consider rezoning the parcels individually in relation to their proximity with the adjoining residents. We propose a compromise could be achieved, allowing this project to be responsible and sensitive to the neighbors, yet monetarily beneficial to the Vendetti Brothers. The three parcels facing the Bayfront Highway could be rezoned C2 as requested. The remaining three parcels that adjoin residential homes could be rezoned to something less intrusive, such as in the residential category. We respectfully ask that each member of City Council to consider the previously mentioned concerns, and contemplate the possibility of our proposal to rezon in a manner conducive to the needs of all. Our voices were not heard before, please hear us now. As you are ready to place your vote, I ask that you stop and think. What would I want in my backyard? Sincerely. Thank you.
Good morning.
My name is Richard Kubiak. I reside at 2534 East 33rd Street. I've been there since 1963. Just as was stated, it's a very nice neighborhood. I think eventually, some development will take place in that property. I would hope that it would be, let me rephrase that. It has the opportunity to be a showcase development. And by that, I mean, a sustainable, environmentally sustainable development, that enhances the neighborhoods that it abuts, and also creates a model, not only for future development in the City of Erie, but regionally, perhaps even nationally. Now, that seems like a stretch. But I think that if we listen to all the talk about Erie going forward, one of the areas where it indeed could go forward is in environmental sustainability in terms of development. I'd like to suggest in closing, that the council consider, in addition to the zoning code, that would be a sustainability category of zoning. That could be easily done. We have a number of very talented local people that could guide council, could offer some good direction, and come up with a really quality zoning category, that wouldn't harm neighborhoods, and would accomplish the economic goals that are necessary to be accomplished. Thank you.
Anybody else to speak today?
My name's Jason Connor. Live at 3315 Rice Avenue. Fairly new to the neighborhood. When I say new, I've been there 10 years. A lot of these people have been there longer than I've been alive. I hear a lot of emotion in the voices of these people. Obviously, it's going to affect us greatly. And I actually have a question for council. How many of you actually live in the city?
We all do.
You all do? Good, good. And, like they said, I, I'm just curious, how would you like this to happen in your backyard? You know, I'm all for something positive, but definitely traffic is a big issue. I live on Rice Avenue, 181 feet of my property directly affected by this. And our street, if you park two cars, you can't barely fit another one down the middle. So, I don't know, you know, what kind of issues that presents. I mean, you're going to try to widen the street into our front yards? I don't know. But definitely, just keep in mind, how many people, this is, this is one of the last truly nice neighborhoods left in the city. And just like you to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak? Guess now we got the opinion from our zoning office.
Armit Shemany, Secretary to the Planning Commission. Mr. President, and members of City Council, the City of Erie Planning Commission, at their regular meeting on March 19, 2013, reviewed a proposal to rezone six properties located at McClellan Avenue and Bayfront Highway. The parcels are zoned C3 central business, and the parcels are requested to be zoned C2 general business. The current owner of these parcels, Vendetti Brothers, would like the properties rezoned to develop something similar to the shopping plaza that was proposed during their first rezoning. Because C3 was designed for the downtown district, the Planning Commission feels that C2 is the most appropriate for this location. Commission then unanimously voted that council approve this request. Questions?
Mr. President. Mr. President, Armit, just a quick question. There's a lot of discussion about the environmental components to this. So, has the board, committee, what, what was the dialogue about that component of this proposal or this request? Was it, is that involved in any way in the discussion?
That is not. We believe that's probably the DEP would, would control that. Anything that's built has to have some state, you know, when we do the permit, some part of it is for the state, does not concern the city.
Right.
And, and this, this particular would not.
Okay, yeah, I mean, and I, and I understand that. I was just wondering if that was any of the maybe peripheral discussion among that body?
Not with the Planning Commission.
Not with the Planning Commission. All right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, if I could. Mr. Shemany, the proposal that Mr. Vendetti showed us from like 1999, this is still the proposal, or was there anything else presented to planning as proposal?
There wa, there was not. Everything was verbal.
Were there other uses indicated besides retail in the Planning Commission conversation?
It was brought up, mixed use.
Mixed use. Was there any discussion of separating the parcels and doing rezoning each one, or a couple here, a couple there, or?
No, there was not. It was all, it was all presented as given to the zoning office, all six to be converted.
How, how difficult would it be to consider zoning different parcels to different designations?
They would, I guess they would have to go through the process again, of going through the Planning Commission if they wanted to change.
There's no reason why, because there are parcels already divided. There's no reason why they can't...
There are six separate parcels as of now, yes.
As opposed to having to subdivide a big parcel, it's already exists.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. President. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, John.
When you reviewed this proposal, did you consider the implications on traffic patterns, access to the site, et cetera?
Okay, that, that is part of the permit process. So, zoning is not affected by that particular part, but the engineering is, you know, the MPC, which we abide by, the zoning, our engineering also has to abide by that. And so, they would follow the rules, but that is, you know, you need approval from engineering before anything can be built. And so, that would be covered by the engineering department for the city.
But it ju, it just seemed to me, in considering it, that the, the traffic issues that were raised are going to be present, whether it's all retail, all residential, or some mix of the two. So, certainly sometime between now and the time the dust settles, and this, that has to be taken into account.
Oh, it abs, you know, it absolutely will, but you don't do a study ahead of time if nothing's going to be built. So, if something's going to be built, then our traffic engineer will, will do the appropriate studies. And the state may even be involved too, because of the state highway.
Right.
Well, it depends on what is going to be built.
I have another question. Mr. Shemany, what about this buffer? I've heard the word "buffer" a couple times. Under the C3, I know there's zero setbacks, so they'd have to, so if it stayed C3 and they want to develop, the property would be built straight out to the Bayfront Parkway, is that correct?
Correct.
Other sides too, would be built out to property line, or just?
Not necessarily. It really stays the front, the front of it.
Is that only the little piece that's on the Bayfront? Or is it also on McClellan side, or I don't know? What's the front?
It could be, it could be any side that faces the street. Now, we presume that there will be streets brought into this property. You know what I mean? Because there are none right now, all the streets seem to dead-end. So, the developers would be responsible to make streets, and they would have to follow city regulations on those streets.
Okay. So, a C3 would require that any street that abuts this property, that the property build out to the right-of-way, or sidewalk, or whatever?
Correct.
Okay. And the current egress to the site is only at the Bayfront? Or there's no egress?
I, I don't see any, you know. I mean, there are paper streets, but they don't, they don't go through, it's just a paper street. There's actually field, because when we mark these, we want to putting signs...
In the field?
In the fields, yes, because there are no streets right now.
With the C2 zoning designation, they would have setback from the road?
It would be a foot per foot. It would be the minimum. So, from one property line to another, if you have a 40-foot building, you would have to be at least 40-foot away from the nearest property line.
Okay.
Of residential.
Of residential. And are you aware of what Mr. Vendetti was talking to us about with national retailers not allowing things like adult bookstores and this and that in their leases, when they lease a parcel and a plaza, that they don't allow those? I, I don't know any detail.
Okay. That I don't know, but because we heard this was a concern, Brenda Sandberg and I spent a couple hours seeing if you could put that on here, because it is from property line to property line.
Right. 700 feet from property line, 700 feet from church, school, park?
Right.
What is the...
And what would happen is, it's just a possibility, and we're not sure, because we're not surveyors. But where the four parcels meet is the only place there's 750 feet. Now, you would have to put a road in front of there, because it would have to be frontage. So, it would be extremely costly. I wouldn't say it was impossible, but highly improbable that this could be done. I mean, and we only did it because of the problems we were looking into from the, you know, what everyone said. And I know that was a concern of council, so we did do this.
Right.
And, yeah, it could be done, but boy, you'd have to run a road all the way through.
Right.
And then make a separate parcel. The minimum-sized parcel, allowed by law, is 60 by 100. And weren't, we weren't even sure, it might be a triangle-shaped, would be the only thing that would fit in this. And then they'd have to go in front of the Planning Commission again to su, do, you know, a subdivision.
Right. Oh, yeah, subdivision. We did try, you know, over the years, to put some of those type of safeguards in the ordinance to prevent adult uses to be close to residential, or close to churches and schools and things like that, so that seems to be effective.
It would in this case, yeah.
In this case, okay. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
One other question. This is kind of out of the box thinking, but you say that in C3, things half, the front of the building has to be in close proximity to a street, or?
No, it has to touch the property line.
Okay. The property line?
Yes.
Okay.
The front, the front property line.
Is it not possible, in that kind of an environment, to create a thoroughfare that would go between certain areas that would, that would affront one of these property lines, not necessarily the Bayfront Parkway itself, but one of the property lines in the middle of the property, such that it would be fronting on that property line?
Yeah, that's a possibility.
I mean, the, the drawing here shows, what, six parcels, wasn't it? Yeah. So, there are property lines between those parcels, right?
Correct.
So, if you were to build a retail on one of those parcels, adjacent to the property line for that parcel, which tends to be in the middle of the site, would that fit the C3 zoning requirement?
You, you would have to have a road, right?
Well, but you can, you could, I mean, new roads get created all the time.
If you built a road, yes.
Yeah, I mean, you could call it Sunset Boulevard or something, I don't know, but, you know. I mean, I look at Yorktown Plaza, they have a road between the parking lot and the plaza. Well, that's a road. Okay, so, has, have you given any thought to... Okay, so has, have you given any thought to whether you could create something like that?
You would have to, you would have to, to have C3, you would have to have a road and maybe a sidewalk, you have to have a myriad of roads, the roads that you could put, the road and a walkway that, that in the building would be.
I was just trying to think if there was any way that, that you, that, that this could be accomplished without having to change the zoning, which I think is one of the things people are concerned about, so.
Mr. President? It's another quick question, and I don't know, Armin, if you can answer this. Just asked a question about individualized zoning of each plot or each property. Is that okay to do? I mean, I'm, is it like spot zoning questions or like individualized zoning issues? I don't know what the rules are with some of that stuff. If we were to have like six properties in six different zonings, is that a, an issue? Are we opening up a box?
That could be an issue.
I don't know what the rules are, right?
I wouldn't want to speak for the planning commission.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, this would be up to the planning commission whether they would recommend that. I, I, my, I just represent the planning commission, their, their opinions of what's going on. So this would have to be presented to them, you know. The zoning office remains completely neutral in this situation. And we only present what the planning commission says. And so they would have to be presented with this and then our office again would just represent what they.
Sure.
What their findings are.
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to get it kind of in the discussion because, I mean, that's a, a one remedy, but sometimes our best thoughts or ideas and remedies don't, aren't legally allowed or, or there's a, a long process to make that happen. So I just wanted to kind of get that in the discussion.
From a zoning perspective, if you did make them all different, I guess you would have to call it spot, spot zoning.
It's already spot zoning, Mr. Schimani.
On, on, yeah, sure, absolutely. I, I agree. I agree, I'm not disagreeing with that, but I'm just.
You don't want to follow one mistake with another mistake.
Well, right. And so that's kind of my point, but again, the biggest thing is trying to find a balance. I don't think that anyone in the neighborhood is saying, and I have family in the neighborhood and Bird Drive, but some of my best childhood memories are my grandparents' garden off Bird Drive. So like I get all of that, but I don't hear anyone saying, don't develop. I hear responsible development is a request and I think that's okay. And I think that's what they're offering to do. So in this kind of open dialogue, I'm just trying to throw out ideas to kind of help meet and bridge that gap of making something happen, but make it happen responsibly and someone said sensitively, appropriately. So again, I don't want to just throw things out that aren't possible or as you said, throwing a mistake on top of another mistake to fix the mistake and you really don't fix it. And then we open up a Pandora's Box of, of things like this. I mean, that's an extreme, six properties, six different zonings, that's very much an extreme, I understand that, but it's also possible, so.
Could be, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Schimani, is, I don't know if you would have access to this, is there any way to get through the DEP where the wetlands actually are on the property?
In the past, in the past, I have called DEP in Meadville. But I haven't, I haven't done anything here because when it was presented to the planning commission, it was never even brought up that there were wetlands there.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Vesnovsky?
Can I be allowed to do that? The Vendetti Brothers Associates had a permanent oil city actually do a wetlands assessment with, which the corp, the corp of engineers in Buffalo office concurred with, there are 5.4 acres as wetlands and they are approximately to the, I would say, central in the 38 acres. And like, as I'll reiterate, they're right now a part of the lifeblood of the McClellan Drive.
Thank you.
We would have to contact the DEP for wetland determination because of the detention pond that was put up, the culvert from south of East 38th coming is now blocked up and had to put all that water under our land years ago. Then they developed a bayfront, the culvert was blocked up and the big detention pond is over there where Rota Ruta used to be and that now takes all the water coming up. Our wetlands are now mitigated, but we have to find out.
At this point, we already had our, yeah, before and against and we've heard our, from our, Mr. Schimani from the planning commission, I think at this point as a council, Ms. Jessica wants to make one more comment and.
You think I'm done, but I'm not done. Mr. Mr. President, could I just have Mr. Vendetti approach the mic so we could ask him a question? We allowed to do that, Mr. Clem?
I, I think we already had our pros and cons on this. We could, we don't want to turn this into.
Debate.
We already had our pros and cons. Even Mr. Turner, I appreciate your, I gotta.
I just wanted to answer the question that was asked concerning where you could look to find a butt, find out about the wetlands. There was a study done and it's the GAI consultant of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation did it back in 98 and it delineates the wetlands.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, I don't want to speak for or against, I just have a question.
I understand that and you're more than welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Vendetti, I would rather direct my quest, question to you at this point, if you can approach the mic. About, about your request for the C2 versus the C3, will you be able to develop the site as it is zoned currently, C3?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Not, not with the way the C3 zoning regulations are right now. That's really difficult to do. You'd have to have a lot of streets there.
Okay. And if?
When you don't have a, when you have no front setback and your buildings have to butt up against each other, I don't know what, what the developer would present to city council or what would be approved. I don't even know what zoning would allow because we're stuck with C3. If we're stuck with it, well, we're stuck with it, but we may not get it developed.
Okay. And have you considered in your, in your decisions to make this request, using different zonings for the different parcels, did you ever consider that or contemplate that as an option?
Not really because that, Mr. Schimani said, that's spot zoning. When you, when you give this to a developer and they start looking at the entire parcel, you can't have some C2 and some C3. They look like they're, they're separate parcels because that's just the way they were laid out, but it's one big contiguous 38 acres. And if you start rezoning some and not the others, that's going to be a developmental nightmare, in my, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our meeting today, our public hearing today. As a council, we will definitely take all things into consideration here between the environmental issues, the traffic issues, the residential issues. The last thing the council wants to do is hold up production or advancement in the city and tax properties, but we have some major concerns that need to be addressed and we will address them and go, go from there. But I appreciate everybody, appreciate everybody's participation today and thanks for coming. Mr. Clem, we're going to do a two-minute break and.
Okay. Next, we have new business, we have resolution appointing two police officers. The first one is Nico Fioranti, 1571 West 54th Street, Erie, being number one on the civil service list.
Are we on ordinances or?
We're on new business. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Ancozzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Wetherspoon, Mr. Monarsky. The second police officer.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
He was still, no, it's number two, isn't it?
We're not on, no.
We're number three now.
Number three.
Yeah, we're on resolution number three, really.
We're good.
Second.
All righty.
Okay. Any separations?
Any separations.
Any separations.
Oh, boy.
Hearing done.
Roll call, the city council on the balance of the agenda. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mrs. Ancozzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Wetherspoon, Mr. Monarsky. Takes us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Start with Mr. Brennan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Three items I'd talk about today, just to report on. I attended a municipal law symposium, the Knox Law Firm had held this symposium yesterday. Very informative presentations, presentation on ethics, Robert's Rules of Order, you know, conducting meetings, municipal law update, right to no requests. Definitely a very informative meeting and well, well worth the attendance. Myself and along with Councilman Mersky, we attended a Destination Erie Legislative Update on, last week on the 20, April 24th. There were updates to the project to say what all the committees are doing and talked about the future steps and we had a discussion on, you know, a lot of the different topics that are Destination Erie study is covering. Also, there is a, I want to report, I attended a presentation, again, Destination Erie had a, a report or a presentation for the waterfront development. WBRT, which is Destination Erie's main consultant for the project, had one of their planners, landscape architects talk about the, the future of the waterfront and what he saw the, saws down, going on down there. So we talked about the future of the waterfront, his presentation also talked about coordinating efforts to create a cohesive waterfront area down there and trying to connect that, that waterfront toward downtown, you know, all very important to the project. Again, thank you to a lot of people who participated, the Port Authority, Convention Center Authority and Scott Enterprises, all had members on the panel for the Q and A afterwards. So I think that's, it was a great idea bringing them together to talk about some of the issues and there was a lot of questions and the event was very, very well attended. And last thing is, I just wanted to report, I'm sure other people probably had this on their agenda, but May 4th, on Saturday, I believe it's Saturday, they're having the electronics and tire collection drop off from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the city municipal garage, 1926 Holland. What I read off the website is there's up to six tires maximum in electronics that are accepted, the TVs, computers, laptops and keyboards. So hopefully a lot of the things that are putting, at the curbside now are going to be taken to the municipal garage to, to get properly disposed of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of brief comments. I attended the, the meetings that David mentioned as well and the one thing that was disappointing to me, the governmental meeting that, that Bob and Dave and I attended, I thought the city was very well represented in that session, but they had invited 208 public officials and there were eight of us total that showed up. So I hope that as the Destination Erie project continues, since we're talking about the future of our region, that we can get, you know, officials from the other municipalities and county and others involved so that we come up with a plan that, that's the best for our overall community. Hopefully we'll get more people the next session. We talked at the last council meeting about blighted property and a couple issues in terms of trying to find ways to make sure that property, once it was available for a repository sale, for example, had a better chance of ending up being productively used than recycling back into blighted status. And, and Councilman Jones had commented about the fact that we do require, if the property's being bought on repository, that we have a local representative so that we can have somebody we hold locally responsible. But that doesn't happen with tax sales. And I think that's something we need to raise, that tax sales are not conducted by the city, they're conducted by others. I think that's something that would be helpful to raise is should we also have that kind of requirement or encourage that kind of requirement with regard to tax sale properties so we're not dealing with properties bought by out of town landlords without any local representation? The other thing is one I think we can do something about is should we have some kind of a process whereby people who are buying properties in a repository sale for the purpose of rehabbing them for their own residence, at least have an understanding of what the likely costs are to be incurred in a rehabilitation in order to remove the blight and meet code. As I understand it now, they don't even get a chance to go inside the property before they purchase it. And, and that seems rather foolish to me that if you're, you're thinking about buying a residence and rehabbing it, you wouldn't have a chance to at least go in it and see the condition and the inside so that you could make an honest appraisal of what it's going to cost. The, the property people tell me that not an insignificant number of these repositories end up recycling back into blight. And I don't think we do the citizens of the community any favors if we lead them to believe that they can rehab a property when in fact they don't have any idea what it's going to cost to do it. So I, I just think it would be to our advantage not only to keep from recycling blighted properties over and over again, but also to make sure that we don't have someone that takes $30,000 or $40,000, their hard earned money, puts it into a property and then gives up because they're still way short of what they need to do. I don't think we're doing the citizens any favors by doing that. So those are a couple of things I think we need to, we need to work on. The last thing I just wanted to mention is there's a local company, it's not in the city, but it's in our community called Rain Eater Wiper Blades that's doing a free wiper blade replacement program today at their business for all active and retired military, police, fire and EMTs. So any of those groups can go to their company, 3011 West 17th, they're going to be open till like nine o'clock tonight to give free wiper blades out, you know, to military, police, fire, EMT, both active and retired. So if anybody's watching this and happens to hear that, by all means take them up on their offer. It's a great local business, they're thriving, they're bringing tax dollars into our community and, and this is one way they have of giving back to the community, I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
City councilmen weren't on that list, were they?
No. No, unfortunately, we were excluded. I'm going to go out and pay to have my wiper blades replaced.
Mr. Wetherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I received several calls regarding the crossing guards and their activities or lack of, and I have spoken with Sergeant Stan who's in charge of that and we're meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock at his office. He's going to bring me up to date on the policies and procedures, what they look for, and we're going to try to correct some of those problems. My main concern was the training of these guards. One of the guards, crossing guards is constantly seen, crossing kids, talking on his cell phone, got a cigarette in the mouth and all the wrong things and it's a dangerous section where they're at anyway. So we're going to meet tomorrow and try to rectify that situation and I appreciate his time. I also received some calls asking Erie Police Department to arrest the speeders. Well, I think they're doing a good job. The last two or three days, I passed several units having individuals pulled over, but the individual call have to recognize that they're going to be individuals who speed all the time and there's not going to be a police unit or bike at that point where you see it. They're doing a good job, they're doing the best job with the number of officers they have on the street at the time. We still have a problem at 21st and Ass Street. Meeting with the chief today after council meeting and we're going to talk about it, we're going to see what we can be doing about it. The store that's on the corner may be, may become a danger, a hazard. We may have to look at that real closely because that's where the group congregates and the loud music and a lot of other activities that takes place. Police is aware of it and they're doing their job, but we're going to talk about it this Individuals, citizens, you need to understand that when we say we are liaisons to an authority or to a bureau or to a department, we are a liaison. We do not and we cannot tell people what to do, we can't make people meet with individuals. They do not work for us on a daily basis, they have supervisors they report to and ultimately they report to the mayor. Yes, we can take your concerns back, we can fight for the concerns and we'll do that and we'll continue to do that, but however, we cannot make a director of any authority meet with you if that's. any authority meet with you if that's what you want to do. That's his or her choice to do that. But we do encourage you to let us know, and maybe we can talk to them and make something happen for you. Parade Street Development, the walls, I, I think it was a shame that they made the development, Peck and Crenshaw, tear down most of the wall, that first section on 19th and Parade, and the section between nickel plate and the development. It looks, can't say it, it looks messy. It just took something away from it. Plus, they sent them a letter saying you need to lower the wall on 19th and German. There is no wall on 19th and German. Therefore, they need to do their work and check the letter before it goes out. It's 19th and Parade. And what I will do, and I have been doing, I will give them a list, because there are many streets that I travel that have shrubbery growing up. It has to be about four feet. I cannot see through it. I will give you the address, and I expect it to get done not in six months. If you're going to put pressure on a developer like that to remove a wall, then you need to tell Roggs to tear down the corner of his building, because I cannot see 18th Street from where I'm at, at 19th and Parade. I think that was a personal tech, attack on Donnie Crenshaw and Mr. Peck. And the only reason they tore it down was simply because you were holding up the occupancy. They had temporary, they had people moving in, but you were holding that final occupancy certificate over their head, so they can't have others move in. So they tore it down based on that. And I think that was a disgrace, and I'm going to stay on top of that one. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Wetherspoon. Ms. Kunzo.
Thank you, Mr. Winarski. Good job. I have no report today.
That's it? Mr. Mersky.
Just a couple of things, along with Councilman Brennan and Councilman Evans. I attended the Destination Erie Government Meeting. Councilman Evans and I also attended the graduation for the Erie Police Academy, Citizens Police Academy. And it was very nice to have all those interested citizens there, and learning about how the city police department operates. Everyone that I spoke to said that it was a good program, and they're glad that we have it. So, that was good. And just two more things. I attended the Neighborhood Watch Council meeting last night down at the library. There's Perry 200 mini-grants for neighborhoods, and the application will be on the Neighborhood Watch website, or you can call the Jefferson Education Society, and they will get that to you. Those Perry 200 mini-grants are up to $2,500. And you need a nonprofit organization to sponsor that as the host for the, for those monies. So, those are there. And also, they had a guest speaker from Border Patrol, and he gave an informative talk about all the work that Border Patrol does in Erie. Believe it or not, they've arrested over 300 people, undocumented workers here in Erie Counties just last year. So, there is a, a need for them, and we thank them for the work they do. And finally, we're going to start working with the mayor's office and zoning on the Mercyhurst area. We've been in talks with Mercyhurst, and in talks with the zoning office, and talks with the mayor's office. And I'm trying to come up with a plan that, that will satisfy the needs of the residents, the needs of the university, and that's doable at the city level, that's enforceable. The one thing we don't want to do is put laws on the books that we can't enforce, because then that just frustrates people more. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mersky. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, I, excuse me, just like to encourage everyone throughout the course of this weekend, rest of the year, actually, to utilize, take advantage of the opportunities, the educational opportunities, social, community opportunities that are going to be offered through the Perry 200 programming, and, you know, from tall ships to workshops, to, to a myriad of different opportunities for exposure over the rest of the year, along with everything else that the city does through cultural festivals. Summer's coming. It's that time of year. You know, celebrate Erie, you know, one of my favorite times of year. One of the most stressful times for Jill, I'm sure, throughout the course of the year. I, I had the opportunity to participate in, on Monday, in a, a panel discussion and lecture at the Jefferson Society. And the topic was around how do different faith communities, and that has different definitions, but basically different religious groups, spiritual groups, faith communities, work together to, to try to, and collaborate together to, to deal with some of the struggles, issues, and problems, and, and social challenges in our community. There was a great speaker from Cleveland, Ohio, who talked a lot about how faith, this kind of merging of, of, again, faith communities with legislative bodies and civic leaders of all different backgrounds, how you come together with a common goal, common effort. And they've had some significant legislative change in the Cleveland area. You've had some significant economic development opportunities that have arisen out of these dialogues, discussions, and collaborations. And so, sitting on the panel, I don't know how I got to be there, but I was sitting with someone from the Hindu faith, and a Jewish rabbi, and a Catholic priest, and a Protestant this, and a Hispanic that, and just everybody, just so different. Muslim sheik was sitting right next to me, you know, full turban and everything. I mean, it was a great experience. The, and they're all residents of the city, which was just an amazing thing for me to, to take in. And some folks who weren't on the stage, per se, you know, we have Bosnian representatives in our community that are, that have been here for 20 years. You know, Muslim-speaking Bosnians. It just threw me off for a loop, but it just shows the diversity, the cultural expansiveness of our community. And, and I think one of the ways that we can truly enhance where we live is to get to know the people that we share space with. And I would have never met some of those people if I had not participated in that particular activity. And so, again, that kind of made me want to utilize my time, just to say, as citizens, we should expose ourselves and, and utilize, take advantage of all the opportunities for exposure. It gives us a different value, different insight on our community. A lot of these people love Erie. What we take for granted, and sometimes when we hear citizens say, "Them folks coming over here, taking our job, taking our money." No, no, no. You don't understand how many people live in one house, you know, until they share space, until someone gets empowered enough to move out. And I mean, there's a lot of things that individuals are so grateful to be in this space that we take for granted. They would do anything to be here and to stay here. And so, they love it here. We should love them and value them, and, and get to know them. And, and again, it just adds to the value of our community. So, get out there, get exposed to that. And I'll say, I have a few other things that we're going to talk about, I would like to talk about, excuse me, but we'll do that at our next meeting. So, that's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Wetherspoon had one other item.
One short item. I'd like to ask the administration if you could ask, ask Mr. Zimmerman to give me a copy of the minutes from his last hearing with Todd Zauric. I sent him an email about almost a month ago, maybe short two or three days, and I haven't heard back from him.
What was his last name? Todd?
Todd Zauric. Thank you.
All righty. The only thing I have to mention, once again, I appreciate everybody coming out today, voicing their concerns and issues regarding a proposed development. Like I had mentioned earlier, the last thing this council wants to do, as well as majority of the citizens in Erie, is want to see a taxing body stop from developing in, in our area. They have some valid concerns, whether it be traffic, environmental, as well as just the neighborhood issue itself. But I trust we will do our due diligence and study this, and get more information, and try to come to a good, good reconciliation, per se, or good common ground, so we can continue to move forward. With that, Mr. Kwiatkowski.
Just a quick comment. We attended the Knox Law Firm Symposium, and also the Neighborhood Watch in the St. Anne's East Avenue area.
You surprised, Mr. Wetherspoon? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Beck.
Just a couple of comments. Thank you once again for welcoming me. It's been an interesting couple of weeks. I've had the opportunity to work with some of you, and I look forward to doing so in, in the future. We do have two new police officers who will be sworn in tomorrow, a male and a female, so we're looking forward to adding to our police force. MDA, the firefighters are going to be out collecting. Fill-the-Boot Day is Friday. That announcement will be made tomorrow at Central Station, but be aware that our firefighters will be in the intersections, collecting for MDA, which is always a worthy cause. And we hope to have some headliner announcements for Celebrate Erie coming very soon. So, thank the city council for their support for Celebrate Erie and everything that you do.
Thank you. Keep up the good work. I think we're done. Mr. Clem. City council, during 11:09 AM, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mrs. Rancozzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Wetherspoon.